I didn't look into it like. How do they invite you? How do they invite you to a meeting?
I just don't laugh when y'all look at me.
I'm confident, hey. We can do better. We can all get that glass.
Yeah, you're real good.
I wish Larry Glass could.
I do, but it's not long.
Maybe I should just call him home or whatever.
Give him a question. It'll be awful.
It's right in the front of.
It's like, yeah, well. Something sexy. I see you got some problems. That was good. We're probably, you know, some.
Scott, you're handling this.
Yes, ma'am.
We got a test.
I'm going to one door in there.
How well over this? I see. All they left there is a weekly. He had a good part of himself.
Yeah, I'm pretty ready on that. First, let I have ourself. Everybody's fighting down and keeping me light.
I just want to help. The Catholic brother.
I use the plan later.
She's right now.
Yeah.
Seven o'clock, the council meeting going. Everybody's with span and congratulations.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice law.
Councilmember Collins, would you please give us a second?
Yes. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all the people here and the families that are represented. Lord, thank you for the freedom that we have to come and make decisions. Bless that you be with us as we go our separate ways. And Lord, tonight, I pray for the Dickinson family and Jake's loss of his wife. And just comfort and be with them in Christ's name, amen.
Benel.
Present.
Gantz.
Yes, ma'am.
Honeycutt.
Here.
Kirkpatrick. Lowry.
Here.
Neal.
Here.
Norris.
Here.
You have before you the minutes of the last council meeting, Monday, April 11th, 2022. At that time, we'll go to the members there. There are no additions or no deletions or changes. I accept the motion to accept that those minutes as written.
Motion by Benel.
Have a motion by councilmember Benel.
Motion, Lowry.
Second by councilmember Lowry. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First by this first reading of an ordinance changing the name of Myrtle Street to Moran Street in the City of Glasgow, Kentucky.
Whereas there exists a city street that runs south from Cherry Street to Kentucky Street that is called Myrtle Street. And whereas the owners of multiple, the owner of multiple parcels fronting on the street has requested the council of the City of Glasgow rename the street to be called Moran Street. And whereas the public hearing was scheduled, advertise that notices were sent to all property owners on Myrtle Street advising that a public hearing on the requested name change would occur in council chambers in Glasgow City Hall on Monday, April 25th, 2022 at 6:15 PM. And it did occur. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the City of Glasgow as follows. Section number one, that Myrtle Street being is hereby renamed, quote, Moran Street, unquote. Section two, the street begins at Cherry Street and runs south to the intersection of Kentucky Street and Lincoln Road. Section three, the Glasgow Department of Public Works Street Department shall erect signs consistent with this ordinance and the city will continue to provide maintenance to the street. Section four, this ordinance is to be effective immediately on publication with all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. Section five, the mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow necessary to implement this action. Section six, this ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest on the Simmons City Clerk, first reading, April 25th, 2022.
I have a motion to accept.
Motion, Gantz.
And a motion of Gantz.
Second, Norris.
Second, Norris. Any discussion? This is a point where we might change for the amendment.
Can we amend that contingent upon Mr. Glass supplying all funding for the hardships and paying off fees?
We want to amend it to say the petitioner has offered to pay with receipts reimbursed to the residents for their expense for making this change. As well as if they have to take off work, they will, with a letter from their supervisor, will be reimbursed for that and will make access for computers if it can be done by that way. Is that what you wanted to do? Is that about the amendment you wanted to do? Okay.
If we had.
We have, we have a.
Have we had a motion and a second on the ordinance?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Now I need a motion on the amendment.
Make a motion for the amendment.
A motion by councilman Norris and a second.
Second.
Second by councilman Neal. All those approve of that amendment signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, like sign. Amendment passes, so now we're going to vote on the ordinance with the amendment in place, correct?
Before we do, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mr. Glass, are you going to go talk to all these residents and set this up?
If.
Assist. Every now and then you need to assist. So if he goes to their house, he helps.
I know one is disabled and.
Yeah. Why don't we send a letter to each one of them? Give them a phone number they can contact.
They can, they can call his office or they can call Bridge. And the only thing I would say, Martin, is maybe we ought to start at the housing authority to see exactly how we could do it. But then certainly we'll take laptops or.
I just don't want anybody in convenience.
No, I agree. I agree with that.
What's the number we should give them?
Two seven oh six two nine four five four four.
Four five four four. We'll put that in a letter and send out just like we did to these people and tell them the several avenues to walk.
Attention, Kim Glass. Attention, Kim Glass.
Do you want to wait until the second reading or do you want to do?
Uh, well, we need to wait until the second reading and then we'll send them out. Okay? So we've got a motion and a second to vote on this ordinance as amended.
Have you voted on the amendment?
Huh?
Have you voted on the amendment? Okay.
Amendment's passed.
Okay.
Now we need to vote on this ordinance with the amendment in place. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Ordinance passed with that amendment. And then we'll have the second reading, the next reading, and then we can give out letters to everybody and tell them what's what if they're not watching it now.
And I have a letter for the representative. Okay. That being said, next item on the agenda is we have County Clerk Helena Chase Burkless who's going to speak about the upcoming voting procedures and the change of state to the primary to ensure that your eligibility for voting should pass. Thank you, Congress.
Okay, well, thank you all so much and thank you, Mayor, for inviting me here tonight. It's always a great opportunity to come and speak to the Glasgow City Council and to, to use this platform to help reach as many voters as we can here in Barron County to let, let everyone know about the upcoming May primary. So the primary date is Tuesday, May the 17th. But prior to that, I want to tell you about some opportunities that are coming up to vote early. So currently, as of April 2nd through May 3rd, you have the opportunity, if you're eligible, to request a mail-in absentee ballot. And due to some changes, I don't know if anybody remembers 2020 or not, but I certainly do. And it did change how we do elections for, from all traditional standpoints to a very modern way. So now you have to go through a portal or you can call my office and we'll take care of it for you. But the portal is www.govoteky.gov. And I have that listed on, on the Barron County Clerk's website and on our Facebook page. But govoteky.gov is the online portal that the State Board of Elections oversees and that is how voters are to request an absentee ballot. Now, if you have an elderly family member that you help, that votes by mail traditionally, you can go on that portal, just take out your cell phone, most of us have smartphones today, and request that absentee ballot on their behalf. Or again, they can call us and we'll take care of it for them. So that's April 2nd through May 3rd. So the last date to request an absentee ballot be mailed to you is May the 3rd. Now, back in 2020, it was open, anyone who wanted to vote by mail could. It has gone back to the traditional restrictions, so elderly, disabled, people that are out of, out of town on Election Day, our military. So there's all kinds of restrictions and those are all listed for you in that portal when you go online to request your ballot. Next up is starting May the 4th through May 11th, we're going to have excused absentee voting at the, at the clerk's office from 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. So that is going to be similar to, that's for six days. So before all the new legislation, we used to do it 12 days at the clerk's office. Now it's six days at the clerk's office and again, you have to meet one of the criteria. So any of our older voters, folks that can't stand in line for long periods of time, disabled, pregnant women in the last trimester of pregnancy, if you're going to be out of town, college students. We've got some college students. I've gotten some texts today. Our college student's home wants to vote, not yet, but starting May 4th through May 11th, you can come to the county clerk's office and vote there in person, not by mail. You will actually, you know, we'll issue your ballot to you, you'll vote your ballot and then scan it into the voting machine yourself. Then, this is new, starting May 12th through the 14th, so Thursday, Friday and Saturday from 8:00 AM until 4:00 PM. That's three full days. Out at the Barron County Extension Office, we're going to have early voting for anyone in Barron County that would like to come out and vote early. So no matter where you live in the county, no matter if you're super healthy or if you're, if you're not, if you want to vote early, you do not have to have a reason. You can come in person and vote early at the Barron County Extension Office, May 12th, 13th and 14th. So that's on a Saturday, eight to four, and then Thursday and Friday also. But I think that's really important to folks. So anybody that wants to vote, we're giving you lots of time. The law requires eight hour days, so we're going to take care of you those three days if you want to vote early. So I expect everybody to come out and vote early, so you know, we won't have a lot of voting on Tuesday, the 17th. But on the 17th, let's talk about the 17th. So on May 17th, that's Tuesday, that's primary election day. We have four locations across Barron County for voters to go and vote. Some people are real excited about voting centers. They love them. We voted voting centers for the first time in 2020. I loved them. The, the poll workers loved them. We got great feedback, but now all of a sudden, folks are not as happy about them. Traditional precincts have, have faded away. We do still have to report precinct information, but we're not going to have those traditional precincts across the county. We had 25 precincts across Barron County. Now we're going to have four voting centers. So no matter where you traditionally went to vote, you can go to any one of these locations or you can vote early. So here's the four locations. Barron County High School Gym, Haywood Volunteer Fire Department, Austin Volunteer Fire Department and K C D Convention Center. So don't worry. You're not going to have long lines. This is a primary election. We didn't have long lines in 2020 in a, in a presidential election. We're going to take care of everybody. We want everybody to vote. Don't get hung up on the fact that you don't have your traditional precinct. Vote early or vote on Election Day at one of these locations. I'm hearing the voices and if you have a concern about it, call me. Let me hear from you. I'm going to do my best to, to see how things go in May with all the, the new changes. And we're going to see if we can add a couple more locations for the general election in November, okay? But I want everyone to still vote. I've had some folks tell me, well, I'm not voting until you get my precinct opened back up in Park City. Well, I don't really think that's fair to the folks that have, you know, fought for our freedoms. So vote, vote for the, you know, remember it's a primary. So you're going to get, if you're registered Republican, you're going to have a Republican ballot. If you're a registered Democrat, you're going to have a Democrat ballot. If you want to know what's on that ballot, you can go on Facebook. I've got the ballot on there. You come by the office, I'll give you one specific to your precinct if you have trouble looking at the, the big, the big one. I know that it's going to be in the paper, I think, this Thursday. We're real excited that we're able to, to make that happen. And, and all this information that I've just gone over tonight will be in Thursday's paper. So the Barron County Progress will be publishing that, so watch for that. Or again, it's all on Facebook, it's all on our website. And just vote. And, and if somebody needs help getting to the polls, take them. We, we want you to help everybody. And again, I know this, this is new and it's changed, but it's, it's still a great opportunity. It's a lot of flexibility and it's pretty convenient if you, if you voted in the voting center before. So still vote, guys. Do y'all have questions for me?
Helena, could you talk a little bit about the identification of individuals coming?
So voter ID has obviously been a huge discussion, not just in Kentucky, but across the country after 2020's election. When you come in to vote in Barron County, just expect the, the poll worker's going to greet you and say, can I see your, your driver's license? And you're going to say, of course. So we're going to scan the back of your driver's license into the new e-poll book, which is basically an iPad. And then we're going to flip the little screen, you're going to sign with your finger and then we're going to check you in, issue your ballot to you. So again, we're going to ask for your driver's license. If you don't have a driver's license, don't freak out. There's some other options, okay? You may have a government issued ID with your photo on there, military IDs, for example. There's some other, other things like credit card. There's a combination of things that can be used. So it's not that you won't get to vote if you don't have your driver's license. Just bring another form of ID, preferably a photo ID and, and we'll work with you, okay? Was that going to be a question, Joe, about? No? Okay.
So you say you know better than to be in the city.
I am, yes. We're, we're going to work on it. So we did purchase, part of the new legislation was to be 100% paper county. And in Barron County, we have, for the traditional voter, we, we were paper ballots. But if a voter needed to vote on the handicap machine, there was no paper ballot. The, the data was stored inside that machine and if we did have a recount, then they had to, the vendor would come in and hook up a computer and download the data and then it would print off ballots. With our new equipment that we just purchased at the end of last year, and it got delivered the first of this year, we made us 100% paper county. So I'm very excited about that. We're ahead of the, the game here. It's very expensive to, to make that purchase. So I'm going to ask the court, they don't know, tomorrow, I'm going to ask fiscal court to purchase a few more, three more handicap machines. And hopefully if that is allowed, then we'll be able to open hopefully three more locations. And I think that will better serve everyone, hopefully. And you can never make everyone happy, especially when you make major changes. But I'm going to do my best because that's kind of what I like to do is make people happy, Joe.
Now, sure, the question you're asking is, is it seems like all of the four voting locations are traditional, which right for the county versus none in the city. So no, but not no Barron County High School was being in the center of Glasgow, but it's considered any county. So hopefully near January, you can find enough locations somewhere.
Well, I hope, Joe, with early voting options, that will bring out folks that live in the city that, you know. And the reason that we're not doing all of it over the clerk's office is because so many people complain about parking. I don't know if any of y'all have ever tried to park on the square in the middle of the day, but you will get run over. People will not stop to let you back out. So you're going to get run over. So sometimes we see like close calls, like nobody look out the window, somebody's about to get hit because we don't want to have to like go out there and talk about them getting run over. Sorry. So it, it's better and it's a smoother. So out at the extension office, they're going to be able to walk in, flat surface, in and out. We'll have lots of, of booths set up because we want folks to be in and out. This is all about fast. Any more questions? My answers are never fast, they're really long, so, but voting will be fast. Thank you all so much, I appreciate it. I didn't mean to. I was looking at Happy. I was looking at Happy and my eyes just kind of wandered over. Thank you all. Thank you all so much.
Here and here are the presentations from the department. As the high professionalist department of public works presented by the superintendent, it's time for the presentation.
Thank you for letting me present tonight and to get everything forwarded up. Let's kind of do a PowerPoint if it'd come up. The light's on over here, Scott. Let me find my place, I'm sorry. Is this, is this scrolling through? There we go. So the Department of Public Works, some activities that we've done. We've done some sidewalk repairs on East Cherry. West and East Cherry, West Brown Street, Leslie Avenue, South Lewis Street. We've done some deck joint ceiling repairs on the old Montreal Road Bridge, repaired the roof on the lower deck at the parking structure, removed and trimmed over 50 trees across the city. We cleaned 400 foot of drainage ditch on Market Street, 210 feet on Bishop Lane. Approximately 25 street cut permits were submitted during this time. The street department collected 271.4 tons of leaves. This is 58 tons more from last fiscal year. The street department purchased a salt spreader and a Ford L350 truck. This past winter, we pre-treated and sprayed approximately 275 tons of salt. The street department constructed two headwalls on the 60 inch diameter road tile at Steeplechase Road. We painted curved sidewalks, handicap parking spots around the square and, and city parking lots. The street department collected 98.3 tons of trash during the 22 spring cleanup week. That was down 26 ton from last year. The street department mowed, hedged and trimmed right of ways of city-owned properties throughout the city. We completed 165 job work order requests. Our municipal road aid funds was used to repair and pave four city streets, North Green Street, East Cherry, Garmin and Aberdeen Drive. We still have funding to possibly mail and pave four additional streets inside this current fiscal year. And when I say possibly, because the cost of materials is extremely, has changed extremely high, is higher. So we provided residence services for two shredder events and one household hazards waste collection event. We provided support to community events, entertain Glasgow, 5K's run, shop and stroll, Christmas play cleanup and other community events on the square, street department sprays, city for mosquito control. And then phase two of the shared walking path is scheduled to be completed at the end of the current year. So I took some pictures of some activities I'll share with you guys. This was a project that was on Liberty Street. There's a step off there by the sidewalk. This is kind of a before, after, before pictures, in process of the street department guys are pouring the concrete and then the finish on the right. There's a project on South Green replacing a bridge. There's some sidewalks to the right, would be on South Lewis that we replaced. Leslie Avenue. Guys headed out for snow. I think this is probably one in the morning. This was a tile replacement on Winter Circle. This is before and after along Bishop Lane, the 200, 200 feet I mentioned earlier. This is Market Street to the left and this was a project on Valhalla on the right. There's some after pictures for Market Street. We've done over 400 feet addition on Market Street. These are guys painting, you can see the stripes, curve cutter and the handicaps in the third picture on the right. Stormwater. Head wall on the left, there was a driveway tile installed for a resident. There was another tile, tile installed for resident driveway. This is a 60 inch pipe. This is one of the projects, you know, I mentioned that we've done a head wall. You can see the capability of some of the pipe that we installed along Steeplechase. There's the, the two walls that were reconstructed, inlet and outlet. Trees down. This is a shared walking path that was in the phase two. This is construction of the first walking bridge. So left is formed. This is the second bridge that's down near South El Roger Wells. And then we talked about our stormwater department. So we made improvements to various storm systems, three in-house projects completed that were listed on the city's 10-year stormwater master plan. The third phase of the Ellis Avenue Stormwater Project is complete. Three in-house projects are remaining to be completed on our master plan that was developed in 2013. We cleaned out and inspected stormwater systems prior to forecast rain events. We created checklist to inspect and clean 13 drains and 11 retention ponds more frequent that are prone for flooding. And then we purchased a mini excavator to use in areas not accessible with tobacco. So here are a few stormwater projects. Now this is part of phase one, phase two of Ellis Avenue. If you look in the first picture to the left, the scope of the work was to shore up the stream line. And this is kind of as it progressed. These are boulder steps, gabion baskets in the first picture on the left and then a walkthrough inspection. And this is down on Tanglewood. This is a phase three that was just, that was just completed. These are some issues that we see in our stormwater division, collapsed tiles, clogged drains, retention ponds. This is a stormwater project on Calvary Drive, I'm thinking this one is. This is along resident stormwater box tiles and seed straw with the right finish. This is a project that was done, I think this was on Bluegrass. And this is kind of the steps of replacing a tile over one of a retention pond, so you get the tiles replaced, foundation, the inner boxes formed, the outer box, form removed and then the straw, matting and seed straw back on to the right there. This was a stormwater drain that we've done some repairs to. There's the box, you can see the three drain tiles coming in, it's a pretty massive box. To the left is a box. It's a, it shows a lot of mud because there's still construction in that area, but the picture to the right is looking back to the box. So capital plans for stormwater, street department, for street department sidewalk repairs, 30,000 update fleet vehicles, 167,000 building maintenance, 25 for a total of 222. Stormwater, two stormwater projects and then equipment upgrades for 184,000. Sanitation department has 11 employees together to collect 5,074.4, seven tons of trash. This is 105.5 tons of more collected of last year's 4973. The sanitation department collects trash from 5,866 residential customers, 332 commercial. And they consistently pick, or this consists of picking up 7,000 cans weekly. 300 tons of recycling was collected, 150 new recycling bins were issued to residents. 600 new trash cans are ready to assist for customers requesting additional cans and to replace damaged ones. On the first Saturday each month, recycling drop hours started again in February of 2022. On the first Saturday each month, recycling drop hours started again in February of 2022. This collection is at our employee parking lot on West Front Street, with participants entering from Water Street and exiting to West Water Street. The transit department, we have a new transit manager, Lenice Coe, started on April eighteenth. The previous manager, Wendy Houchens, was, has transferred back to DPW as administrative assistant, replacing Kim Jackson, who retired on April fifteenth. The Glasgow Transit System has been on a reduced schedule since September of 2021 due to staffing shortage. Her bus is running eight hours a day, five days a week. Average monthly ridership is close to four hundred trips per month, with fifteen percent of these riders having limited mobility issues. The transit system has opened everyone, and currently there is no charge to ride the bus. Transit system budget for the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two was a hundred and sixty thousand, seven twenty-five. Transit system is currently being reimbursed a hundred percent of Cares COVID grant monies. Landfield apartment has thirteen employees, is a process seventy-three thousand, one hundred and ten and a half tons of municipal solid waste, sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-five tons of construction demolition debris, and two thousand, six hundred and sixty-two tons of compost. We sold a two thousand and ten D eight dozer on GovDeals. The landfill purchased a used twenty sixteen D six dozer, a twenty fifteen articulating dump truck at seven forty-five C, and then a twenty twenty-one eight twenty-six K compactor, two pickup trucks, or twenty-twenty-twos, and then one Honda utility vehicle. Landfill sales of recycling materials are up forty percent from last year. Our landfill gas sales are approx, are, are down approximately six percent due to February scheduled maintenance to the generator. And we're in the process of cap, of capping approximately five acres in three areas of landfill. Uh, we've made repairs for our scale house that had some rotten wood and leaking when it rained. Uh, we replaced two overhead doors in our recycling building. Replaced vacuum pneumatic and sampling hoses on our methane wellheads. Replaced the undercushion three pieces of equipment. Lifted methane wells for final capping elevations and continue to, uh, clean and make repairs to our new cell to get approval to begin placing trash in it. So this is a, is, this is our new cells, and, uh, this is kinda out of the distance, but, uh, the guys are rolling fabric down through the valleys, there's three areas there. And then at the very end, there was some, uh, water, uh, mud that has washed in that we've been trying to clean and repair. There is those ends, you can see the magnitude of, uh, how much area it is, is cleaning the mud off the liner. There's another picture of it. To the left is a, uh, leachate line repaired down to a tow drain. To the right, um, may, on, uh, March the thirtieth, we had to shut the landfill down, the wind was so bad. So it was about eight of us that were picking up trash. That's the methane gas well, and you can see, these are the hoses that we replaced, or not on deep spread little wells, but, or, is a picture of what we're seeing. This is a capping, uh, to the left is, uh, you can see the clay, to the right's the plastic liner. There's a, an area, another area that we're, that we're capping. And then this is a pad that was poured through, or composting grant, uh, to capture the liquids from the composting that has to be, uh, captured and treated. And then, uh, general comments, street and landfill apartments operated, uh, the year understaffed. Uh, we, we have witnessed increase in material services, fuels across all departments. We have been delayed many times to the, uh, winter weather, being wet weather and also being understaffed. Street department has a backlog of approximately twenty-five open jobs. The landfill is behind on moving dirt and daily covers. We're facing challenging issues as the city's infrastructure continues to age along with increases in the cost to maintain them. And then, I have any questions?
Roger, just a couple of questions. Uh, you made a mention there about repairs to the parking garage, uh, here in downtown. What's, what's the condition of that garage moving forward and, uh, like, the life expectancy or additional expenses we're gonna have in maintaining that facility?
The, the parking garage is, has about three to five years of life left in it. The repairs that we've made, we had some, uh, concrete scalping that happened. Just where you get freezing and thawing of the materials between the joints, and those were the repairs that we've made. We had to go in and power wash to loosen that material up and then go apply it, uh, a, a, a mortar techniques to contain it.
And out to landfill, when do you expect to have the new cell online?
I'm gonna refer that to Lincoln, he's a little bit more in line with what's going on out there, if he doesn't care.
We're currently waiting on the line crew to get done with, uh, the capping project so they can move over to, uh, help us out a little bit on the, uh, new cell project, so. The areas I can be, you're completed, uh, for the capping project, areas still in progress, adding additional parts to that area. Helping to get the line crew out there within this month, but I'll just have to see how the way there anything else goes.
So, two months, three months?
We're helping, hopefully, yes.
It's all we- weather related too, so, I mean, you plan it in a weather hitchy. Or there's, uh, something with the crew can't make it to the liner crew or something. Materials, getting materials?
All materials are on site.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you.
Guys, just one question, do, do, with the trans park filling up, and I don't know if they bring their trash here. I mean, is that, I mean, do y'all have like a matrix of how much trash is coming in versus, you know, what to build another sale? Or is there any thoughts to raising the price for people bringing it from out of county? Does it put a bigger burden on us as a city? And I don't know the answer to that, I'm just asking. Now, do they bring their trash like in Smith Grove and Baldwin Green?
Uh, city Baldwin Green has recently started bringing their street's weakness to us. Uh, most Baldwin Green garbage goes to Ohio Davis County, but Bill and not here.
The recycling program, how's it going?
Uh, right now, we see the recycling, uh, what we're selling back, uh, prices up forty percent. We restarted the Saturday drop-off, the first Saturday of each, each, we don't have a, each week, it seems like we'll get a few, a few more residents bringing stuff into us.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna try to turn this off, guys. Oh, okay.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Council. I have a few, uh, numbers I got together here for you all. Actually, I've got thirty-three years' worth of numbers, but luckily, I'm only, we'll talk about two of them, okay? Uh, in two thousand and twenty, uh, of course, one of the big questions that everybody always asks, how many burials do you have a year in the cemetery there? Two thousand and twenty, we had a hundred and sixty-four burials. Uh, two thousand and twenty-one, we had two hundred and nine burials. And so far this year, we've already had seventy-five burials. Back in two thousand and twenty, we sold a hundred and forty-four gray spaces. Two thousand and twenty-one, we sold two hundred and ninety-two gray spaces. Uh, and we've already sold sixty this year. Now, uh, in twenty-one, twelve of those burials were cremation burials. I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty were twelve, two thousand and twenty-one was eleven, and we've already had seven cremation burials this year. That number keeps going up as time goes on. The, uh, the grave lot sales in two thousand and twenty-one was drastically above what it's ever been before. And I think that was two or three different reasons. Our stimulus money checks that a lot of people got, they came up there, they told me that they were using that money to buy gray spaces with. That and just the fact that there's more people in the Glasgow area, more people that's here, more people's gonna pass away, you know? And other than these numbers here, our regular routine maintenance that we do up there every day is what's been going on at the cemetery. So, that's what I have. If anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them as best I can.
Uh, what are you seeing some needs, uh, that you needed in the cemetery improvements?
Well, in the coming years, next few years, uh, we're gonna need some more new driveways to go around, some, adding some new sections. We've got some property back there, a wooded area which is actually behind Verizon now. Most of that holler there belongs to the city cemetery. So that all needs to be cleared out and filled. And it needs, really needs to be done a few years prior to starting using it as cemetery. Uh, so sometime in the next three to five years, we need to take a serious look at that.
Thank you.
Okay. Short and sweet, that's the way I do it. That's right.
Just one more question because I, I may have a, a serious misunderstanding of what we're doing here. In the original request I got from Rhonda Mona, it only had the change as the last sentence being added to subsection H. Where?
What's yellow is being added.
Well, that was not in what I got from Rhonda. The only thing that, that I got from Rhonda that was being added was that last sentence on subsection H. And then when, when you sent me your suggested change, that's what it had, plus there was one little section that had a red line where you've been lined out. You know, and I asked you about that, but this, this section here at the end of section H, that one sentence was all that was added on that one. This right here. And, and tonight, we've got a lot of stuff, and I think a lot of that stuff that's, that's yellow in there now is already in that, in that section that may have been added the last time it was amended.
That, that section right there is what they would consider a paragraph. The rest of it might have been shortened or some rewording if it's in yellow, but.
Well, it wasn't.
I think that's the only thing that needs to be approved.
This was all that was in yellow in what Rhonda submitted to me, that one.
I think that's the only addition that needs to be read. And if we find out that any of this other has been, is an act of question to be changed, we'll bring it back and make an amendment.
Give me an opportunity to go and print that email, I could go and print that. Did we bring it back?
I've got her email here, if you wanna look at it. Let me let you look at it because, so.
Can we leave this to the next council meeting till you all get it worked out?
Do what?
Just leave this to the next council meeting.
Let her look at it.
Probably can. That paragraph is what they were concerned with.
That's the email she sent me there. Well, to explain, you know, why there's a little misunderstanding, Mona had to be away this past week to go to her classes, and, uh, I was tied up all week, and we were doing this sort of touch and go, and we, we weren't able to sit down like we normally do and discuss these things, and we may have had a little misunderstanding on this particular one. You see why I'm confused, because these are a lot of changes. These things may have been somewhere in the system.
I'll make a motion that we move this to the next council meeting till you all get it worked out.
That's a great idea.
This will be moved to our next meeting and is clarified then.
We don't wanna make a mistake with it, for sure.
No, we don't need to do that. Uh, the next item is a resolution to, uh, uh, the City of Glasgow to make application for a federal grant through Economic Development Initiative Department of Housing and Urban Development.
City of Glasgow Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-Two Dash Blank. A resolution for the City of Glasgow to make application for a federal grant through the Economic Development Initiative Department of Housing and Urban Development to be used for the downtown farmer's market. Be hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, that April Russell, grant writer for the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to make application on behalf of the city for a federal grant in the amount of one million, four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars to the Economic Development Initiative Department of Housing and Public Development, which will be used and perceived according to their guidelines for the downtown farmer's market. This grant has no match. It further is of the City of Glasgow that Harold Armstrong, Mayor of the City of Glasgow, shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to execute any and all documents necessary in order to make application for said grant. So adopted this twenty-fifth day of April, twenty twenty-two, Harold Armstrong, Mayor, Mona Simmons, City Clerk.
Motion from, uh, council member of three, a second, a council member, neither, which, which, I'm sorry. All those in favor? As soon as we make the motions, we discuss it. Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, go ahead. Yes, discussion.
I just wanna say that, uh, farmer's market has turned kinda contentious. I guess would be a good word for it, especially on Facebook area. And I don't know the reason for it, but it has been that way. They were not, um, and I've been on the committee since just about the start, but when April went to them and asked for information to do this grant, they were not forthcoming with the information. And I ended up providing it to her. Uh, so, everything you read on Facebook's not necessarily true. It is one side, but it's entertainment.
Let me make a comment to back that up. If this proposed farmer's market downtown does not receive, we can build the own, our own, the Glasgow city can build a farmer's market with this grant. By their say of, uh, as, and, it just has to go for the farmer's market, that's what we've requested for. So whether or not it, this other goes through or not, then we will have funds to build a farmer's market. There won't be any taxpayers' money going into it, either way. Any other questions? Hearing now, all those in favor of this, uh, uh, trying to acquire this grant, signify the same eye. Those are probably slot signs. Need a roll call, was it just one, was it one?
Sure.
One no, and, uh, the rest, uh, yes. Got it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, we will apply for that grant and see how, how it unfolds. The next item on the agenda is a first reading of ordinance, City of Glasgow authorizing an adjustment in water and sewer rates for the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission. And we have, uh, uh, Scott Young and, uh, uh, Mr. Watson both here tonight. If, uh, once we read this, you have questions, while they can field your questions.
Just a little bit of background before I read this, the, the Water Company passed a resolution after, uh, Mr. Young's presentation here. At the last meeting, they passed a resolution asking for, uh, this increase based on the information that Scott had given us before. And this is pretty detailed, and, uh, I'm gonna go a little bit slower because I don't wanna misstate any of these numbers. But, uh, this, this is the, uh, increase that we were talking about before, it's being needed. City of Glasgow Ordinance Number Twenty Twenty-Two, An Ordinance of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, authorizing an adjustment in water and sewer rates by the Glasgow Water and Sewer authorizing an adjustment in water and sewer rates by the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission. That whereas due to increasing operating cost, aging infrastructure, and meeting increasingly stringent regulatory requirements, and whereas the Glasgow Water Company has identified current and long-term needs assessments for the system, and whereas the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission has recommended certain changes to the current water and sewer rates, as evidenced by the resolution attached here to it, incorporated by reference as Exhibit 1. I just want to make sure that that was attached, and I don't think it is. But it says exactly the same thing that this ordinance says, except for maybe a sentence or two that was superfluous that I dropped out. Now therefore, be it hereby ordained by the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission as follows. This, this is, oh, hang on just a minute. That, that technically, and somebody may need to amend this, is be it hereby ordained by the Glasgow City Council as follows. Section Number 1, upon recommendation by the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission, as evidenced by its resolution dated April 14th, 2022, the City Council of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky adopts the following water and sewer rates. Section 2, the retail rates set forth below shall become effective and applied to all bills rendered by the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission for retail water and sewer purchases described in the ordinance on and after council approval. Water rates to be charged for water service are changed as indicated. First 2,000 gallons, which is a minimum, inside the city limits, that's changed from $8.93 per month to $9.93. Outside the city limits, that goes from $12.76 to $13.76. Next, 18,000 gallons per one, per 1,000 gallons, $3.40 inside the city limits, that's from $3.30. And outside the city limits, it goes from $4.12 to $4.24. The next 80,000 gallons per 1,000 gallons goes from $2.61 to $2.69. That's inside the city. Outside the city, it goes from $308 to $3.17. The next 900,000 gallons per 1,000 gallons inside the city is $2.24. Previously, it was $2.17. Outside the city, it goes from $2.59 to $2.67. The next 1 million gallons per 1,000 gallons inside the city is, goes from $2.06 to $2.12. Outside the city, it goes from $2.16 to $2.22. Sewer rates to be charged for water service are char, changed as indicated. First 2,000 gallons is a minimum, inside the city limits, it goes from $11.82 to $12.82. Outside the city limits, from $14.57 to $15.57. For amounts over 2,000 gallons per 1,000 gallons, inside the city, it goes from $4.18 to $4.31, and outside the city, from $4.94 to $5.09. Section 3, Glasgow City Council further gives the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission the authority to annually increase retail water and sewer rates as follows. The commission is hereby granted the authority to adjust rate structures up to a 3% maximum increase annually on and after August 1st, 2023. The authority granted the commission hereby is further limited in that the authority to set rates shall expire in five years from the date of the first rate increase, as identified in section 2 pursuant to this ordinance, unless the city's legislative body elects to renew or extend the commission's authority to set rates prior to the end of said five-year term. C, the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission shall notify all of its customers by mail at least 30 days before any rate increases become effective. Section 4, the Mayor of Glasgow is empowered and directed to complete any documents on behalf of the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, necessary to implement this action. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage and publication according to law. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk.
Having heard this ordinance, do I have a motion to accept? Have the motion by Councilmember Honeycutt?
Second, Norris.
Have the second by Councilmember Norris. Any discussion?
I would amend it to, I, this is your part of the Glasgow City Council.
Amended to what?
Correcting, he's correcting, my mistake, in section, in section, uh, where it says be it hereby ordained, it needs to say by the Glasgow City Council instead of the Glasgow Water and Sewer Commission. Okay.
So, we have a motion to make that amendment, and we have, we have a second by Councilman Benet. All those in favor of the amendment, as read, signify the same eye. Those opposed, like sign. So now, everybody that approves this, this ordinance with the amendment.
I've got one question for Scott. Did the amendment go down, was it 4,000?
Before, changed to 2,000?
Or was it ever 4,000?
It's offered at 2,000. Our average customer, and I don't think exactly percentage, I would say about 65% of our customers use about 3,500 gallons. That's the normal consumption for our residential customers.
A question, also, is when would this rate go in? Is it after the second reading is published, or what's the?
Yes, that would be, and typically what we do, Councilman, is we'll have a 30-day lag, because it's actually, once it goes into effect, per deal. So what we will do is send out notice to all our customers, and we anticipate, should it get second reading at the next council meeting, it would have a, it would have an effective date of July 1st, we can coincide with our fiscal year as well.
Any other discussion? Order me back, I think we had a motion and a second on the amendment.
We already passed the amendment.
So, that's passed. Now, we need a motion and a second to read it as amended.
Already got that, just vote on it.
So, we just need a vote to approve this ordinance as amended. All those in favor, signify the same eye. Those opposed, like sign. The rate and ordinance has been passed. We have a second reading next meeting. Oh, let's see. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2022, a resolution authorizing conveyance of 30 acres, fixtures, and personal property to the Plightech Corporation pursuant to a lease financing agreement dated May 1, 1994.
City of Glasgow Resolution Number 2022- Blank, a resolution authorizing the conveyance of 30 acres, fixtures, and personal property to Plightech Corporation pursuant to lease financing agreement dated May 1, 1994. That whereas on May 1, 1994, the City of Glasgow, Kentucky, and Plightech Corporation entered into a lease financing agreement, lease with respect to the real property containing a total of 30 acres, more or less, and with a physical address of 845 Industrial Drive, Glasgow, Kentucky, Barron County PVA Parcel Number 80-23B-L1, all fixtures and personal property contained therein collectively referred to as the premises. And whereas the lease, section 4.2, provides that Plightech Corporation is given the option to purchase and take title to the premises by deed and bill of sale at the expiration of the lease term and following full payment of the bonds for the price of $100. And whereas quite some time ago, the lease expired and Plightech Corporation fully satisfied its payment obligations under the lease, and Plightech Corporation now desires to exercise its option to purchase the premises. And whereas Plightech Corporation has also been paying the ad valorem taxes on the premises for many years. And whereas the City of Glasgow, Kentucky and Plightech Corporation are in agreement that a deed and bill of sale should be executed and recorded as contemplated by the lease, and now therefore, in light of the foregoing recitals, it is hereby resolved by the City of Glasgow, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, the City of Glasgow shall execute and deliver to Plightech Corporation a deed and bill of sale to the real property containing a total of 30 acres, more or less, with a physical address of 845 Industrial Drive, Glasgow, Kentucky, Barron County PVA Parcel Number 80-23B-L1, and all fixtures and personal property contained therein, here and after collectively referred to as premises, being the real property to which the City of Glasgow, Kentucky acquired title by deed of David W. Bailey and wife and others dated May 1, 1994, and recorded in deed book 230, page 745, Office of the Barron County Clerk, Glasgow, Kentucky. Section 2, Mayor Harold Armstrong shall be and hereby is authorized and directed to take any and all necessary action in order to carry out the transaction contemplated herein, including the execution and delivery of a deed and bill of sale to Plightech Corporation adopted this 25th day of April, 2022. Harold Armstrong, Mayor, attest, Mona Simmons, City Clerk.
Having heard this resolution, do I have a motion to accept? I have a motion to accept by Councilmember Patrick and a second.
Second, Norris.
Second by Councilmember Norris. All those approve, signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Resolution does pass. And that ends the agenda for tonight. Announcements, our next scheduled meeting is here in City Hall at the council chambers, Monday, May 9th, at 7:00. It's in person, of course. And we have scheduled our next town hall meeting. It will be Monday, June the 2nd, at 5:30 in the council chambers, and that's again, an informative town hall meeting for all the councilmen to hear voices of approval or disapproval from things that are going on within the city. All of you try to?
June 6th.
What did I say?
6th.
Okay, four days later. I'll come, June the 6th.
They don't make the prayers are down?
Yes, they are. They are.
Did they, if somebody wants to come speak, did they send, like, they want to talk about the view, or did they just show up?
They can show up and sign up, and for residents of the City of Glasgow.
They can have, how many is maximum to speak?
And then, we, do we need to be prepared to enter, or are we just here to let?
Just inform, just let them, you can take their votes, and then you can appear as speak to something, this action. After they're done, whatever they, but that being the town hall meeting, can't be any?
There's nothing we need to do, other than just listen.
Just know. Are they okay, or?
Do you hear them, right?
Is there any other announcements? Hearing now, I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Motion.
I have a motion to Councilmember Patrick, second to Councilmember Daniel, Norris. Thank you all for coming.